All right, I'm going to rise.
He's right.
I'm all in sound tonight. We have to remember our retired five hundred Robin O'Donnell who passed away just a few days ago. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have to tell the sewer commission we got to block it, too. Call the order. Low Coll City Council Meeting, January twenty seventh, two thousand fourteen.
Councilor Connell.
President.
Councilor Crumlin.
President.
Councilor Arden.
President.
Councilor Dunford.
Present.
Councilor Hartford.
Present.
Councilor Hearsaw.
Here.
Councilor Kinsey.
Present.
Councilor Tontsa.
Present.
Councilor Vogel.
Present.
Councilor Cameron.
Here.
Late file items. You'll see three items on your desk. The first one is a Franklin Street ordinance that was left out of the packet. We'll call it a strip, but there are some late files. There are two late files, Communication Five, which is the blue, sorry, is the TBR letter from Roger Foster called Social TBR Study. There's a Communication Number Six, which is the mayor's update.
Motion to approve the rule set this late file item, may be accepted.
Second.
Second. All of them?
Aye.
Twelve.
People in the public front.
I had a meeting at seven, but I'll talk to you after.
Since I'm like you are present, I've been asked to remind everybody to see what you are powered on in your lights and also whether you are on mute.
Make sure people are off mute, not on mute.
Well, depends on one of you, isn't it?
True.
David McValman.
Dave McValman, Twenty Fifty Seventh Street. I'd like to talk about a couple of things. First of all, Plum Island Water and Sewer. I encourage the city to have emergency plans, not only for the water and sewer project, for what likely to happen out there because it's being accelerated and it's being changed. And I don't think it takes a genius to know that there's going to be a disaster out there sooner or later, either with the water and sewer program, not only because of what's going to be talked about tonight, but other things. Secondly, I'd like to talk about executive session. I don't believe you should go into executive session for two reasons, three reasons. Many executives, dozens of the executive sessions, happened during the water and sewer project. Most of them were gone into, as far as I'm concerned, illegally. I've never heard a good reason for executive session. I've never seen any minutes twelve years later for the executive sessions that were gone into. They're supposed to be public information after, after a period of time. I doubt if you ever find anything useful in them, but you ought to look at them anyway, and you ought to make them public. Secondly of all, my understanding is the only legitimate reason you can go into executive sessions, the state law lists ten specific reasons. The only one that comes close is litigation, not potential litigation, unless it's immediately likely of being threatened. If that's not the case, I ask you, councilors, to think very seriously about going into this and document everything that's said in incorrectly. Because I think some of the problems you're having out now with the water and sewer problem wouldn't have happened if a lot of things were public. And not only executive sessions, but non-public meetings. First of all, all Plum Island laws to write the vote individually, separately on this project because of a non-public meeting. Secondly, CDM was selected in a non-public meeting eighty, to do the study project on this program eighty percent higher than the other two bidders after a de-selection project down to three. For eighty percent higher price and half the work. They were seven months late delivering this project. It was just a study project, no reason to be late, no permits, nothing. The only thing being seven months late gave them a sole source contract for the, for the other phases of the program. This went on in an executive session, or a non-public meeting, by the way, not executive session. Counsel, some of the councils were there. So please, think hard about going into executive session. Don't make it worse, make it better. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Kristen Farrell.
Oops, sorry. My name's Kristen Farrell, I'm a Spofford Street resident. You'll be voting on my appointment this evening to the Commission on Disabilities. I wanted to just come and introduce myself. I am an American Sign Language interpreter by profession. I work with deaf and deaf-blind individuals throughout the Commonwealth and Southern New Hampshire and New England. And I have two children. My children have spinal muscular atrophy, which is a degenerative neuromuscular disease. My son is two and uses a wheelchair, and my daughter is one, and she does not yet have any symptoms. So I'm looking forward to my appointment on the commission, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Jenny Donahue.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to follow up my soon-to-be compadre, introduce myself to some of the newer members to the council. I'm the chairman of the Disability Commission, and I just wanted to put it out there that while we are getting more and more members, as I'm sure you've noticed over the last few months, which is fantastic, we still need more. And I wanted to extend invitations to all council members, but especially new ones as well, to visit a meeting, consider joining. We, we do need a city employee to be on the commission as well, and it would be wonderful to have a liaison to the city council. So again, just thank you, and nice to see you all.
Thank you. Josh Castle.
Hi, my name's Josh Castella, I live at Fifteen Cutting Drive, and I'm up for appointment to the Mosley Woods Commission and Parks Commission. I just wanted to say hello, and if you had any questions, I'm right here.
Thank you. Let's hit the public comment. Move on to Mayor's comment.
Thank you, good evening, council president, councilors. It's a pleasure to be here again as we start the new term with this new addition to the city council meeting with my update. In addition to the narrative that you received via email and now as part of tonight's packet, I just wanted to highlight a couple important components in the update. One is that we are concerned despite at the MMA conferences past week and Mass Municipal Association Annual Conference where we met with members of the Administration Finance, Governor Patrick was there, and talked about his House One budget. And, you know, talked about the increases in the local aid, chapter seventy funding, school funding. Unfortunately, as you look through the way the formulas are allocated per community, Newburyport does not fare well with the House One budget. We are fortunate that Speaker DeLeo was there and talked about how he plans to do a better job in terms of increasing House, increasing local aid, and we certainly will be advocating for that, and I will keep you posted as the budget process unfolds. We are experiencing a decrease in three hundred thousand dollars. Extra two hundred thousand dollars will be diverted from our school chapter allocation to the charter school. And again, not to say that there's anything wrong with charter schools, but we've been advocating that there's a problem with the funding mechanism for charter schools and the impact that it has on our school funding. We're all aware of the deficit that we're trying to close the gap this year with our school funding, and it's not a good position to go into our FY fifteen budget. So we will continue to advocate for changes in those funding formulas. In addition, we're receiving a little less money for veterans. I think that one we can absorb, it's over thirty thousand dollars, but I'm mostly concerned about our local aid and our school funding. I've already reached out to Representative Costello and to Senator Ives to let them know that we are not pleased with the initial presentation. Tomorrow night I will be attending the governor's state of the Commonwealth, and will certainly have an opportunity to continue advocating for our community on behalf of our FY fifteen budget. In addition, I just wanted to point out a couple other factors that are a couple other points I presented in my update. And one is that we are, after a long process of advocating for a barrier, a wall, a fence for the residents on the side of ninety-five north of the Whittier Bridge project. We were able to get, it went up to the federal government, federal highway, came back and approved that we could, the mayor could negotiate directly with Walsh McCourt, our contractor, in terms of working out details of building the biggest fence that we possibly can to help those neighbors on that side. So that was good news. We are also, as you may recall, we, the Walsh McCourt mitigation for using city property, we were able to get them to pay for the paraglass, the divider, that will separate the shared use path between the eight lanes of highway. And it will be absolutely magnificent and a much safer way for residents to travel and connect Newburyport, Amesbury, and Salisbury rail trails. So we will be working with the planning office to finalize our mitigation agreement with Walsh McCourt, which will include now this updated fence. We also found out recently, too, that they're looking for additional access path to ninety-five rather than using the exit, so we have to sort of work out those details as part of the mitigation agreement. But as you know by now that anything in addition to what is being used on city property, my hand goes out and I ask for mitigation for the city. So we will continue to do that and advocate for the residents, especially those who are being impacted by the Whittier Bridge project. In addition, we are in the process of putting together our, our budget. We began working with the department heads, and things are moving forward on that front, and we'll certainly keep you updated as we, as we move forward in that process. And unless you have additional questions for me, I think most of the other information in your packet covers what we've been working on over the last, last couple of weeks. Oh, one other piece I just wanted to highlight for the public, too, is that we met with two finalists for the zoning. You allocated sixty thousand dollars for the city to put out to bid a contract to have a complete holistic review of our zoning, which hasn't been done since nineteen eighty-seven. We met with an interview to potential groups this past week and hope to by the end of the week, or maybe early next week, to begin to award this contract so that we can begin moving this process forward, which is very important to our city. I appreciate the work that Councilor Igerman has put before the council in regard to some interim measures to protect and preserve some of our historic structures, including downtown, and look forward to our review of those documents that he put before you so that we can move forward to, again, work on protecting our historic structures in the city. And finally, we are just about finalized in terms of our teams to begin moving forward and updating our master plan. We're a little bit behind the gun in terms of doing this. If you have not been assigned to a team, please get in touch with myself, Kate, or Andy Port in the planning office, and we'll be sure that you get to be part of this process. It will be a very public, open process as we move forward and update our master plan, which is an important guiding document for our city. Please remember that the city council, the rest of the public, is hosting a open public comment night tomorrow on the waterfront, which will be followed by Wednesday night, which is a public meeting to invite all the residents to come together and business members to talk about any ideas that you'd like to put forth to celebrate our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. In addition, we are, on February fifth, will be hosting the meeting with the city council, the NRA, and the city to just have a roundtable to be sure that we're all starting on the same place as we begin to start a new, open, and inclusive process to talk about what's going to happen on our waterfront. And also Thursday night, it will be an opportunity to meet with the architects regarding the transient odor facility. So awful lot going on, and thank you for your time, and I will be back in a little while to talk about Plum Island Water and Sewer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda.
Which consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for the January sixth, which was the inauguration, and the January thirteenth city council meeting, both in for approval. There are no transfers. There are four communications. First communication is second-hand motor vehicle license renewal, Plum Auto Works, that's in for approval. Second is a one-fund, two-point-six-mile charity road race sponsored by the Winter Circle to be held April thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, to be referred to public safety. Next is the third annual Pan-Mass Challenge Kids Ride for June twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, again, going to public safety. And fourth, a mid-year budget report to be referred to budget and safety. There is five first reading of appointments. First, Leslie Echold, thirty-six Warren Street, Fruit Street Local Historic District Commission until March first, two thousand seventeen. Three reappointments, David Zink, six Laurel Road Electrical Inspector, January thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. Next, Anthony J. Finari, Ten Olson Road Pivoting Director, DPS, February first, two thousand seventeen. And James McCarthy, Seventeen Rusha Street to the Planning Board until January thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. That's the consent agenda this evening.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to remove appointment number one. Appointment one, please.
Anything else?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Removed. Move on to the regular agenda. I would entertain a motion to take Order Three out of order so we can discuss this before to accept the gift from the Rotary Club.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Move on to Order Three.
States, January twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, that the city council of the city of Newburyport accepts with gratitude the gift in the amount of two thousand dollars from the Rotary Club of Newburyport for beautification of the Newburyport Roundabout at the corners of Mosley Avenue, Spofford Street, and Merrimack Street, submitted Councilor Charles F. Tontsa.
Move to accept. Do the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Of course, I love the Roundabout, so, you know, I've been pushing this for ten years, so this is a great pleasure to me to be here to accept money from the Rotary Club, so thank you very much.
I just would like to say that the Rotary is such an important civic organization in our community and continues to step up and do wonderful things to support our community. And this is just another example of how they have come forward to help with plantings and would also like to say that we don't have to worry about all these wonderful plantings because Latitudes, John Grassi is going to be taking weekly care of the planting. So it will continue to look lovely for all to enjoy, even though it was a difficult construction project, it's now done, and thank you so much on behalf of the city of Newburyport.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd be delighted to present it to you. It was a long time in coming, just after Roundabout was fired. Rotary is an international organization made up of local clubs. We're a humanitarian organization. Its mission is to make the world a better place, and our world starts right here at home, so I'm thrilled that we're going to make the Roundabout a little bit prettier for the city.
Thanks so much, Senator. Appreciate you.
Now we'll move on to the presentation of water and sewer treatment plants. Which I'm told will take about four minutes, right?
No questions then.
Oh, now we're up for four hours.
For the councilors that don't know me, I am Peter Hartford. I've been the owners' project manager on the sewer project dating back to May of two thousand nine. And we're close to an end on both projects, but with me tonight, I'd just like to recognize Tony Finari, Director of Public Services. The chairman of the Sewer Commission, David Hanlon, is behind me here. And then out in the hallway is Chief Operator of the Sewer Plant, Joe Dugan. With that, I'd just like to...
Mood lighting, too.
And for the councilors that were on the committee or council from before, the last time I was before you was, I think, November two thousand twelve. At that point, we were finishing the first contracts and starting the second contracts, so I'm really going to try and focus on the work that's been done since that time, but I will touch upon the work that was done here. First thing is that the sewer treatment plant, as you may know, we packaged the, the project in two different contracts so that we could maximize the ARF funding that was available at the time. Contract one, where we got the ARF funding, that was essentially completed in July of two thousand twelve. Contract two was just recently completed or reached a substantial completion point as of November twentieth of last year, two thousand fifteen. This is just a listing of the major components, contract one. Yeah, I don't want to run through all of them, but, you know, I basically just, you know, included some photos. This is the new operation control laboratory building that was constructed. It's a lead, it was designed following lead principles. We are in the process of submitting our lead-up occasion in hope to find out in the next couple of months what level we achieved in the lead rating system. This is one of the primary clarifiers, and you can, you may be able to see around the, the, this white here, that's a laundry tower. That's provided for odor control purposes. That was one of the major things that we put in that upgrade. And then in this building here is another new building, it's the aeration blower building. These are the aeration tanks, and you may not be able to see it just because of the lighting, but we used to have these big mixers that were mechanical mixers. Now we've got the fused air that's being pumped into the tanks, and it diffuses up through the bottom of the tank. It's a much more efficient operation. Contract two essentially involved demolition of the existing process building that was there, replacement of all the mechanical equipment in that building, and upgrading the sludge to watering system that is implemented at the treatment plant. The first part was the headworks building here, and again, I apologize, it's, I don't know if you can see anything with the lighting, but the headworks is this small building here. And, you know, we basically stripped the exterior of it, refurbished it, put a new roof on it, and then on the inside of it, we installed a, this is a mechanical step screen that sorts out all the debris and rags and what have you that come into the plant. This is a tube that basically, it, once it moves it, it has a wash system that washes it, dries it, and then forces it out of this tube into a container for disposal. It may not seem like a lot to you, but it does help the process because over the years, the treatment plant operators have had a lot of problems with plodding pumps because we don't have to blow the treatment right at the front door of the plant. And here's the, the new operation building that was constructed. There's basically two sides of it, and you differentiate them based on the type of roofing. This is the metal roofing with a pitch on it. Over here, we have the, the flat roof. This is just from the other side. Again, this side is where we basically have our sludge tube watering operation, and then the truck bay garage here where we discharge the sludge into it. On the other side, we have maintenance areas, locker room facilities for the operators and other storage areas. Downstairs, you can see here, these are the new new pumps that were installed. There was a period during construction where we were bypassing our flow in order to install these new pumps, but they're all up and running now. These are the gravity thickeners that are behind the building. These were renovated. The exteriors were stripped of the brick and replaced with metal siding. The roofs used to have the ugly green domes on them. We have a low-profile roofs on them now. And the piping that you see over here, that's odor controlled. Basically, we take the air, we suck the air out of those tanks and then put them into a biode, and then the interior mechanical equipment of that, these two tanks were also replaced far more quickly. These are the new forty-year presses that these take care of the sludge tube watering. There are two six-channel presses that were installed. They are very efficient and remove, you know, they basically take a liquid that comes into it with four percent solids and drives it to about twenty-five percent solids. And then from there, it's parked to a condo facility in Nixwich. These are just new pumps that were installed, and these are below ground. These basically feed the, the sludge to the new presses. And here we are, this is our truck bay garage. So there, this is the conveyor that comes from the presses, and it goes into this conveyor chute, and it discharges into the various, there's two different trucks depending on which one is being loaded and how much material is in there. Once they, once they're filled, they, we haul that out to, it's the stuff I mentioned before. Now, here's the, the budget update. As you all recall, back in November of, I think, two thousand eleven, we, we came to city council to increase the budget of the project for a variety of different reasons. And it went to, from the original of twenty-six point three eight to the thirty-two point six five. Here, you can see the current distribution of the costs. Obviously, the bulk of it was related to construction, four million. And then, you know, it, it's divided amongst the various different pools of money that we had set out for the budget. So that's the sewer plant project. This is just the, the last thing I wanted to point out as far as the project cost. Because of the, the various different grant funding that we did receive, we did, we were able to reduce that thirty-two point six five and get it closer to the original budget. So as you can see, the thirty-two point six five, that was from September of two thousand eleven. This is the original project cost, so when you subtract that, you wind up with about six point three million dollars. We do have to pay issuance costs because the project is being funded through the SRF loan, and right now, we have a budget of sixty-seven thousand for that. And then the next three line items represent our grant funding. The bulk of it came from the federal money. We did get two different grants that totaled four point four million. We also received a little over a hundred thousand dollars in rebates from National Grid for various different energy improvements that were made. And then we just recently sold three small parcels of land to the abiding residents, which resulted in a revenue of about twenty-three thousand. So the net increase in the project cost from the twenty-six point three eight is one point, let's call it one point eight million dollars. The only thing that's not included here, which is another potential revenue source, is the sale or the surplus of the remaining, the remainder of the one fifteen Water Street block. There is an existing building that we've been using for storage as well as for contractors' construction area. I believe that once we're done, the, the intent is that that building and the land around it may be surplus, but that, there's nothing in the set in stone there. But that's another potential source of revenue to further reduce the, the net increase in the project cost. With that, I'd like to turn our focus now to the water treatment project. This, again, was divided into different phases. As far as the water treatment plant project, it was two phases. The first phase was the construction of the new clearwell. That has been completed now for over a year and is fully operational. Phase two was to do some water distribution system improvements, and that was completed back in December of two thousand eleven. The one that was most notable to all you probably was the work that was done with replacing... The one that was most notable to all you probably was the work that was done with replacing the water main over Route 95, because during that time, big costs and traffic because people trying to get on, on and off the highway. And then phase three is, we called the miscellaneous water treatment plant upgrades, but I didn't kind of give you a little more detail than that. Like I said, phase one, the major part was the construction of the new clearwell. We also did some work in the sludge lagoons. This is the new clearwell and pump station building. I left in the picture that we had in there where it was green, there was no snow. But if you recall, we all invited you out back in June when we dedicated the building to George Lowler, the former Chairman of the Water Commission. We've been very pleased with this building, and it's functioning without any incident. These are just a picture or photo of the pumps that are installed within that building. There's two sets of pumps. One set of pumps, the small pumps here are for finished water. They pump the water into the water distribution system. And then there's these larger pipes here, the pumps that are associated with the backwash pumps. Every day, we backwash the filters, and it requires a tremendous amount of water in a short period of time, so we need the larger pumps for that. This was just a standby generator that was installed as part of that project, and then the new overflow structures and lagoons that were installed. Phase two, like I mentioned, was a variety of different water distribution system improvements. There were a lot of small pieces of warming installed to eliminate dead ends in various parts of the city. Basically, we like to loop all the water pipe. And like I said, the last one, the installing, the liner across Route 95 is a one problem you noticed. Phase three included demolition work for the old clearwell as well as the spring lane battle house, replacement of a lot of mechanical equipment in the existing building, upgraded the drainage system. And then the biggest construction item was a new flow equalization tank and recycle pump station. And that was basically built in the footprint of the old clearwell. Here's a photo of the old clearwell. They had, they basically had stripped it down here and were preparing to demo that existing concrete structure, and it went very easily. This is the new flow equalization tank that's in that same footprint. You can just see the top of the wall there. It does not, you know, it's fairly low to the ground. And then in the background, you can see some valves and pumping. Basically, the flow equalization tank, what that does is normally when the plant backwashes, all that water that is pumped into the filters overflows and goes to the lagoons. And then from the lagoons, the solid material will settle out, and all that flow is then discharged to the river. With the flow equalization tank, we can now move the flow into this tank and then recycle it back into the plant. So we're not discharging 100,000 or 200,000 gallons of clean treated water on a daily basis. So it's just a more green approach, and it's better use of our resources. Again, I apologize for the photoing and lighting, but here's the, I can't really see it. This is where the old finished water pump station used to be, and over here is the Bartleton Pump Station. That area now, there's the pump station. It's all been demolished, removed, and then reseeded. In the background, you can see where they have, that's all the construction related to the four-year bridge project. And then this is, I just have some photos going through the water plant to show you the areas that were worked with done. Here, you know, we put in, you can't tell it's all on the ceiling, but there's sprinkler piping, electrical conduits, all the floors have been repainted. In this area, we have rapid mixers, these two things that go up here. Those were all replaced below ground. The area was cleaned and painted. One thing about the water treatment plant is that you can't see a lot of the process work because it's in tanks and it's all enclosed, so you're not going to see, show your hands. Here's another chemical storage area. You can see the red piping here going up. That's the new sprinkler system that was installed. And then here, we have the filter room, where we have new control panels that were installed. They were actually backwashing at this time, but you can't tell from the photo, but this time, he's over here seeing, he's backwashing. And then around the exterior of the building, we replaced all the windows, new roof, we've got a new sign, and then a new perimeter fence that goes around the entire facility. As you may recall, when we dated back to 9/11, there was a lot of emphasis on trying to, you know, make sure that these types of facilities were secure, so we now have the fence that completely encloses that facility. And last one, at least, we have the budget, current versus original. You can see that originally, we had estimated, or the appropriation that was made for this project, the 18.75. We benefited on each phase of the project from lower than its anticipated bid cost. So our construction costs, you can see that they're, it's about 12.8, which is the 14 million that was estimated. Engineering has been pretty much, there's only been a small increase there, and that was mostly attributed to the phase one work that was done on the clearwell. Because we were trying to maintain the integrity of the existing one, we had to do some extraordinary measures to protect it, which resulted in both additional construction costs and engineering costs. So you can see, at this point in time, our current estimated cost of three phases is just over $16 million. So we're well within this project. Any questions? Sorry, we've been on four minutes. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. President. In terms of odor control for the sewer plant, how has that been over the last few months? And if it has not been where we want it to be, what are the likelihood of it getting better?
Well, one of the things that has been ongoing the last, I guess, three months, is we have been doing work on primary clarifiers, which has required taking one of those tanks down in order to do work on the tank, which it kind of stresses the plant because it's intended that have both working at the same time. So periodically, we'll get odors from that, especially when they take the tank down, because you've got the picture, it's a 10 or 12-foot depth of the tank, and probably eight to 10 feet of that is liquid, but then as you get down to the bottoms, you miss the solid bubble. When you're draining that tank, it can be a, an odorous effort. But I'm happy to look forward that as of last week, they completed all the work on those tanks, so they should be up and running. There should be no need to drain them in the future. The other issue or item that we have that to address, and it's not really part of the treatment plant project as far as the upgrade, but it's part of the normal maintenance, is the odor control facility that we use, is the biofilter. That is scheduled to be replaced sometime later this spring, because it's one of those things where it uses compost chips, and it's, you need to replace those every five years, and five years is up. So we need to do that work. Right now...
President? A second question, but it's my understanding that a lot of the sludge management, which was done partly outdoors previously, has been moved indoors. Is that completely indoors now, the four-year presses and the elimination of filter presses? It was supposed to have reduced odor coming from that particular location.
Yes. During, during the major part of the work, we had a temporary facility located, it was in a white building, part of the tent. The mobile presses outside, it wasn't like we could do odor control there. That was in operation, I think, for 14 months, and they ended that equipment, I think, at the end of October. We started using the four-year presses in September, but at the time, the building was still open. The building is fully enclosed now, all the doors are closed. The odor control piping is hooked up.
The trucks are filled indoors now?
Trucks are filled indoors. The trucks fit indoors. As you recall, the old building, they didn't fit, they kind of stuck outside. So, yeah, I mean, all the odors are being contained within the building and treated at the same time.
Just a follow-up, because I've been getting a lot of complaints, not by Ward, but about the odor, through last Friday. I haven't heard anything. So, as I understand it, the part of that should not be a problem anymore, but there may be some odor through April when that biofilter is replaced?
Um, I can't really think of the biofilter, the work on the biofilter will impact that much. The, you know, like I said, the primary clarifier work, they, we put the second one back online last week, so that may be an issue. But at the same time, I always tell people, never lose sight of the fact that it is a sewer treatment plant. So to think that it's never going to smell, I think is unrealistic. It's a biological process. It can get upset by, you know, things that get discharged in the system and are out of our control, and it's not something you can just flip a switch and make it go. It does take time to regrow or reinstate itself. So, you know, I think the guys at the plant are doing the best they can. They add chemicals where they can to try and reduce odors for the extent possible, but, you know, it's, so it's never going to eliminate.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to give you, you know, walk out of here and everyone thinks, oh, it's never going to smell again, because that's, that's not the case.
So I'm going to, and I'm just speculating here. When, when you're working in that plant, can you tell if there's odor escaping?
Yes.
You can't. All right. So there would be no value to having a hotline where people could call in and tell you that? And then, no, I just saw, so you know where this is from?
Yeah. But I know at the same time, the mayor's office feels calls all the time, and they'll get sent right to us and, you know, we'll investigate if there's a problem. Sometimes it's not always a plant.
Yep.
And sometimes it's...
It's, it'll be a long time.
Yeah.
Thank you. Peter, this is great. I'm always fascinated looking at infrastructure come alive, whether in person, going to the plants, or seeing the video and whatnot. Just a quick question. As, as the teams have been going out over the years to, you mentioned going across Story Ave and replacing, putting a liner in there. You mentioned changing the Green Street pipe from six inches to eight inches and so forth. As, during all this work, from your perspective, or maybe even from Mr. Dugan for that matter, what is the state of, of the pipework, you know, across the city? I know it's, some types are very old, but generally speaking, are they, are they working? Are they, are they reliable? Is there a point when, you know, more might need to be replaced? I'm just wondering, kind of, big picture, you know, in terms of the state of the, what's below ground?
That's a difficult question to answer. You know, from the sewer side of things, I think the system is in fairly good shape. Back in the early 2000s, the city did spend a couple, two, three million on doing rehabilitation work on the parts of the system that were leaking or showing signs of structural defects. I know the sewer department has a five-year capital plan where they've identified to do improvements where they know they have problems. On the water side of things, I would defer to Dan Lynch to give you an update on that. But at the same time, I know that, you know, the true measure of the system really is certainly winter and how many breaks they're dealing with. And I know they're dealing with some breaks, but it's not, it's not out of control. So, you know, we, both the water and sewer commission, they have had what's going on and, you know, but moving through those capital plans to make sure that they're making the necessary improvements.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Go on to Communication Five. A letter from Roger W. Foster, addressed to the City Council, states in part, "Purpose of this transfer development request report requested by Mayor Holliday is to clarify a comprehensive solution to the central waterfront dilemma." He also says he made an application to be appointed to the upcoming vacancy on the NRA. "Please let this package serve as a request for your support." Goes on to, for two or three more paragraphs, I'll read them if you would like, Mr. President.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Mutation Six?
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? We're going to Appointments. Appointment number one.
Josh Castler, 15...
Nope.
Leslie Echol, 36 Warren Street, Brute Street, Local Historic District Commission until March 1st, 2017.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve first reading.
Motion to what?
Motion to approve, first reading.
So it's received and filed?
Received and filed, correct. Sorry.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Eight. Any appointments?
Josh Castler, 15 Cutting Drive, Mosley Woods Commission until January 31st, 2017. Barry J. McBride, 5 Pine Street, Salisbury, Assistant Wiring Inspector, January 31st, 2015. Daniel J. Cullen, 16 Boyd Drive, Newburyport Housing Authority, January 1st, 2019. Kristen M. Farrell, 28 Spoffett Street, Disabilities Commission, January 31st, 2017. Mark E. Bilado, 63 High Street, to the Historic Commission until May 1st, 2017.
Motion to approve collectively.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
A one reapointment, Andrew R. Port, 12 Central Place, Sargus, Director of Planning and Development, January 31st, 2017.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
I seem to have forgot one, Mr. ... Richard B. Jones, 283 High Street, City Clerk, January 31st, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Order number one. Dated January 27, 2014, City Council establishes a tree commission revolving fund in accordance with 44 Section 53E and One Half. Source of the fund shall be fined, voluntary payments, fees, charges, contributions, donations, grants, insurance settlements, and other payments received from private individuals, businesses, government entities, and persons or businesses making payment to the city for damage caused to trees located on city property. Would you like me to read it all, Mr. President?
No.
Okay. Submitted Charles Tonto, Chair, Budget and Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I met with the Chairman of the Tree Commission and a couple of other members, and we discussed this. It, I think, the funds that have been raised, Hugh Kelleher made a donation a hundred years ago, years ago, a hundred dollars years ago. It now has about a hundred years ago. You, sorry.
He's not that old.
And the establishment revolving fund for the tree commission, just simply, it's prudent, the fund would have to be renewed with the budget every year, and this will allow the tree commission to further its mission.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Order number two.
Dated January 21st, 2014, that the City Council of Dated January twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, that the City Council of the City of Newburyport accepts with gratitude the gift in the amount of two thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars from Ken Jackman, one hundred and fourteen High Street resident, for the purchase and installation of four cast iron bollards on the sidewalk at the northwest corner of the intersection of State and High.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Two quick questions, and certainly, this sounds like a good idea, and I know Mr. Jackman was before us recently. My question is, is the order is written, the twenty-three hundred fourteen dollars, sounds like it's going to cover all four, but is it more of a split cost with the city for the, for the, for the letter? And my second question is, I recall, I'm sort of interfering at all with access on that sidewalk. I know there's a light stand there, and I'm thinking about wheelchair access and strollers and things of that nature.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a letter attached from Mr. Jackman. This is a matching amount for a total of forty-six twenty-eight. That's a letter dated November twentieth, two thousand thirteen. I know with the traffic and Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, we talked about the placement of these to make sure that the handicap access and the pedestrian access actuator were easily accessible. So, we're working with DPS on that. We're thinking that this is going to have to wait until we reset some of the curbs, because they are in bad stead, basically because vehicles coming off State Street are turning right onto the sidewalk and beating the curb down. So, those are going to be reset. So, it's going to be a, a little bit of a project, but something that really needs to be done.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? We're going to ordinances.
First one is section thirteen one sixty-eight, parking restricted on certain streets. This is the one you would see on your desk. No person shall park any vehicle on the following streets of portions of streets as indicated below Franklin Street. The extent is no parking, Westerly Side only of Franklin Street, from the property line between ten Franklin Street and six Franklin Street, and running in a northerly direction to Water Street, submitted Counselor Allison Harkless.
Motion for public safety.
Second. In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Ordinance two, section thirteen dash one eighty, Resident Parking, add to G-two, Fair Street between Water Street and Liberty Street, submitted Counselor Jared J. Argaman.
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
We're going to ordinance three. Ordinance three is a zoning ordinance amendment entitled interim demolition control overlay district, which goes on for pages. It, maybe I should read the purpose, which is section eighteen B. Interim demolition control overlay district and the same special permit district shall be established due to the unique land use patent and architectural, cultural, and economic and cultural character of the buildings, structures, and lots, both individually and as a group, that are located in the historic residential neighborhoods of the city. This section is intended to encourage the implementation of the recommendation of the city's nineteen ninety-one historic preservation plan, two thousand one master plan, and two thousand three waterfront strategic plan, all as amended and supplemented from time to time and otherwise to promote the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city by, among other things, protecting the land use patent, architectural, cultural, economic, political, and social heritage of the city through the regulation of proposed demolition of historic buildings and structures located in residential neighborhoods of the city, which will help to maintain and perpetuate the established skills of local architects, craftspeople, and tradespeople, promote energy efficiency, smart growth, and affordable housing through adaptive reuse, and enhance opportunities for cultural tourism.
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Ordinance four.
Ordinance four is, right here. Off-street parking regulations, again, it goes on for a number of pages. It's submitted by Counselor Argaman. I don't know if I dare to summarize for the counselor. Essentially sets up a fund that would be used to hold monies that would be contributed by developers or other property owners who wish to use the parking lots in their account.
Motion to refer to planning and development and the Traffic Safety Committee.
Second. In discussion?
Is the Traffic Safety Committee a committee of the City Council?
No, but my understanding is they are an advisory committee for parking concerns. No?
Yeah, for traffic concerns, I think, safety concerns. Mr. President, I just think it'd be cleaner just to go to planning and development, or planning and development and committee of the whole, and that way we get that other input. You know, obviously, there's a lot of angles to this. I mean, certainly, it's a zoning, zoning thing, first of all.
Planning and development is fine with me. I'll amend my motion.
Is that as in committee of the whole also?
I would think so, yeah. I think, I think the previous issue also, we might want to just have as a committee of the whole, just to, I mean, there are going to be big issues, and I think have the council along for the whole ride would, would be good.
Motion?
Motion to refer to planning and development of the whole.
Development, committee of the whole.
Yeah, committee of the whole.
Second.
Second.
In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Right. It's the interim downtown overlay district, I-Dod, which, again, goes on for a number of pages, and I wouldn't do it justice by summarizing. Submitted by Counselor Argaman.
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
The second?
Second.
Second. In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? We're going to committee items.
I'd like to move the third item, under sixteen, which is the creation of trust fund for other post-employment benefit liabilities. I move that we...
Remove from committee. Point of interest, it should be removed from committee.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead.
President, this, the, the motion will create a trust fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We are, the motion calls for the creation of a trust fund in order to, to establish a, a fund for the other employment benefits, post-employment benefits, essentially for health insurance for city employees. This motion in particular is, to set up the trust fund, is important for this city's financial bond rating and for assuring that, that, that the accrediting agencies, Standard and Poor, for instance, see that the city is beginning to address it. The city has approximately sixty-four million unfunded pension liability, as many other communities do, and the credit, credit paying agencies would like to see us begin to make a gesture, I would think of it, to, to address that. And this would simply set up that trust fund. Incidentally, it passed unanimously out of Budget and Finance.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Does the trust fund? Anything else?
Move to remove from committee item one, the free cash transfer to the OPAT trust fund.
Second. Committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion?
Move to approve. And, you know, this is twenty-five, it's a token amount of money in the face of what the city owes, but it establishes funds in the, in the fund so that it, the city is showing that it is aware of it and will keep the bond rating companies happy for a while. I would point out that Standard and Poor raised the bond rating from double A to double A plus. They noted the liability. They said that unless there was major change, it, they were watching it, it was some concern. They did not anticipate the change, unless there was a change, so it's...
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could direct a question to the chair, if not to the mayor's office. In the description of this transfer request, it mentions that this appropriation is to quote-unquote "begin funding." To your knowledge, should the council expect to see future transfer requests from free cash to this account?
My knowledge is not this year, all right? The, the situation is very much in flux. The, every community in the state, if not the country, by the way, is facing this problem. And, you know, the state will, will take, probably take some action to remediate it. It's not clear whether or not there'll be a demand from free cash or anywhere else to put more funds into it.
Just to add a little bit of context, from past Budget and Finance Committees of the, of the council over the years, Mr. Squillis has educated us from time to time on this, and these, these long-term liabilities are very fluid, very hard to predict, because they're really, you know, twenty and thirty years out. Mr. Squillis had the analogy, it'd be sort of like if you had a mortgage of several hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, and your, your bank was upset with you because you didn't have the two hundred thousand dollars on hand to pay off, you know, what you need to pay off in twenty years. A lot of these accounting regulations came into effect with companies in the, in the middle part of the last decade that went belly up, the Enrons and companies like that, and left their employees high and dry and weren't able to fulfill their, one, their pension obligations, but also their post-retirement health insurance and things like that. And the reality is, with the exceptions of places like Detroit and probably a few others, cities just don't go belly up, knock on wood. I hope I haven't just jinxed us. So, you know, the fact, you know, we're unlikely to go bankrupt and then, and leave our retirees on the hook and out, out in the cold. You know, we will continue to operate as we have for two hundred and fifty years, I believe it is. So, so that, that's really a little bit of it. So, in some ways, it's, it's one of these, you know, there may be much ado about nothing, but it's, it's good just to take a step to establish the fund and at least put a little bit of money in it now, and hopefully, we won't have to sock in too much money. We've always been a pay-as-you-go. We've been able to keep up with our obligations. Most of the pensions now are pretty much self-funded by the employees, and, and we're trying to get that way with health retirement as well.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
No.
Anything else coming up?
Move, question two, transfer of free cash to the mayor group.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? So, if you move this meeting? Motion?
Mr. President, this, this motion comes...
Motion to approve first.
Sorry. Motion to approve.
Second.
I will learn that. This motion comes before you with a split vote. Two of us in Budget and Finance favor it, one person was opposed. This is a request for a transfer from free cash to, for the rest of this fiscal year so that the city can have a grant writer. My understanding, the, the grant writer would work in, on both the city side and the school side to research grant opportunities and to apply for one on behalf of the city. My, my opinion is that, my understanding is that the mayor is familiar with this person. It's under ten thousand dollars, so it doesn't have to go out to bid. And I would, I would hate to see this delayed, because I think over the next few months, we, we ought to get in there and take advantage of grant opportunities.
Thank you. Counselor?
Take the back three item, Budget and Finance. I was, one, I'm not necessarily voting against this, but there are so many unanswered questions with this that I was hoping that we might speak this in committee. Simply, my questions are, yeah, it, it's under the bid of ten thousand dollars. It's nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. It goes until the end of the fiscal year, when most likely, we're going to try to bankroll this again. So, I am questioning the spirit of what we are doing, especially when this is a contract, and I don't see a scope of work. I don't see goals, objectives, I don't see what we want to accomplish. With all those being said, I, I think it's, it's a good idea, but I'd like to see, when you hire someone in a contract role, there are, there are certain things that you expect. How many grants are you going to write? How many grants are you going to apply for? Whatever it is, what grants we are looking at. And I, I know that grants are more or less smoke and mirrors as far as what's out there. You, you may not know, but let's face it, we know what we're, we're looking for. So, I am asking that we, we just look for a scope of work. The other, the other question here is the dollar amount. I don't know if we can get a better grant writer for more money, less money, if this is the going, the going number. I, I recognize what Counselor Crontar has said, that the mayor knows this person, that, that's not a problem. I think that as a city councilor, my goal, my job is to be the check and the balance. Once everything is checked and balanced, I'll go far. But until such time, I'm just hoping that we can get more information.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to solve the third part of the mystery, I did vote in favor of it in committee. So, now you know who, how we all voted on that. I, I did get a little bit more information after the meeting, as Counselor Cronin discussed, there were some questions that we had, and I didn't have the, the full packet that we had from our, our last council meeting. This, the average, the, the hourly amount would be eighty-five dollars. I think that's in a, in a relatively reasonable range for this. If we did, did put it out to bid, I think we would find some, something in the sixty to a hundred dollar an hour range. This would be for five hours a week, approximately. There could be more or less, depending on what, what was going in. As Counselor Cronin alluded to, the, the smoke and mirrors, I mean, is really the unpredictability, unpredictability of whatever grants may be coming up. I mean, sometimes there are, are grants that you know will come up at a certain time of year, and the expectation from the mayor's director of Policy and Administration and the mayor was that this person probably would work on, you know, six or so, six to eight grants over the course of the six months. You know, I'm, I'm comfortable voting for it tonight, I think, going onward, because we have had this conversation over the last couple of years with previous counselors, Jenny Lamar, who's now working in Human Resources for the city, was doing this, this function, and I think we've brought in people from time to time, but I think we should have a, just a more thorough examination for it, to see that we are getting a bang for our buck. We talked a little bit in committee about whether you bring this in-house and have this done by a permanent position. My own sense would be, I'd, I'd almost rather have... My own sense would be, I'd almost rather have a ready vendor list. When a grant comes up that department heads or the mayor or the Director of Policy and Administration identify, then we go to that ready vendor list, and then we pick, you know, one of those grant writers that has time to work on that grant, and that way we can more accurately peg what we're spending to the demand. But I think for now, I think I'm comfortable voting with it, and I don't, we're getting into the fiscal year, so I just assume pass it.
Counselor Hargman?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could direct a question to the Chair, Committee Chair. The Mayor's memo of January seventh indicated that this position would be split between the city and the school. I'm wondering if that point came up in your committee discussions. In particular, I'm wondering whether the ninety-seven seventy-five requested is inclusive of the school department amount of work and/or if the school department would be contributing a different amount. Is the ninety-seven seventy-five for everything, or is the ninety-seven seventy-five inclusive of the school aspect, in which case the question would be, could the city council fund fifty percent, and does the school committee fund the other fifty percent?
It was brought up in discussion. Counselor Cronin said that he was unclear as to whether this was going to be all on the school side or split, all on the city side or split between, but we did not address the possibility to have the school side pick up some of this cost.
Thank you.
I can just speak to that one point, at least, especially for this fiscal year, that school's looking at a pretty significant deficit, so they wouldn't be able to fund any of this particular contract. And the five hours a week is split between city grant needs and school grant needs. And just going back to the scope of services question included in the packet, the page after the Mayor's memo talked specifically about the grant opportunities this company would be working on, looking both generally at schools, but parks grants, green communities grants, transient voting facility, that project that's ramping up, as well as the intermodal parking facility. I know that there are two grant programs in particular that are due the middle of February that she would be working on immediately in terms of putting that grant application together.
Thank you, Counselor President. I don't have the packet from last meeting where he has the resume, but I'm assuming somewhere she's claimed how much she's brought in in regards to grants. And from my perspective, I would like to see how much bang we get for our buck. So an investment of ninety-seven, compared to what, like, what are we looking to get? Because if we're going to get a little more thousand, and hopefully more, this sounds like it's a good bet.
Yeah, I mean, any one of the particular grant opportunities that this person would be working on would be well in excess of that. We're talking tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars. Her resume speaks to raising over three million dollars over the past twelve years during grant writing, and she's worked with Haverhill, Malden, and Wakefield in the past, in addition to a lot of nonprofits.
So it sounds like a good investment.
Counsel Augment?
Just a question for those that are on the committee. So essentially, we're buying one-hundred-and-fifteen hours. Is that really how the contract works? I just want to understand it. I mean, I didn't bring a calculator, but I think I have that right.
Yeah, I had it around a hundred, yeah.
Okay, so could it be, we think that'll get us to the end of the fiscal year, but essentially, it's one-hundred-and-fifteen hours, whether it's six months or nine months? That's the question.
Hopefully, it'll last till the end of fiscal year. Well, yeah, that's...
Yeah, so that, the way the contract will be drawn up, it will be not to exceed that number. Because otherwise, that would be considered bid splitting under the Inspector General's procurement regulation. So it will be for the balance of this fiscal year, and again, we'll be looking for FY-15 as to whether we'll be contracting this out or bringing it in-house.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Thank you, Counselor Tomlinson. License and permit.
Motion to remove item number one, LCA Motors.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
License and permits met this evening, and all their paperwork is in order, and it was voted unanimously to approve it.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Nothing else coming up? Neighborhood and City Services?
Nothing this time.
Planning and Development?
Mr. President, nothing coming out, but just wanted to, again, remind councillors that we have a Planning and Development in committee, the whole meeting tomorrow night at seven o'clock upstairs in the auditorium. We're basically, it's a listening session for us to hear from citizens and stakeholders about what their feelings are on the waterfront, so I certainly hope most of you can attend that. Planning and Development's briefly going to meet after tonight's council meeting, just to line out how we want to run that meeting and try to get us out by three P.M., three A.M. So I think we'll have a good turnout, and we'll take it from there. Thank you.
Is there any time limit tomorrow?
For you, you could speak as long as you want. No, I think, I think we'll see what the attendance is, and then try to divide the minutes and maybe make it a less than three-hour meeting, less than two-hour meeting. So it might end up being a two-minute, three-minute per person kind of thing. And written testimony, written statements would be most welcome. Certainly, people can read them, but then we can create a record that we can share with the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Public safety?
Motion to remove item three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Go ahead.
Motion approved.
In discussion, Counsel Cronin.
This is the annual Frigid Fiber Road Race, put on by the Rotary Club, which, by the way, donated some money to the city. This is an event that's been going on for, I'm going to say, twenty-plus years. The reason I bring this up, and I'm talking a little ad nauseam about it, is that you'll notice the scribners error on here. The race begins at Michael's Harborside, and then the racecourse goes straight on High Street. Well, you can't get there from here, but it does go up Tinkham Street to High Street, and then follows the High Street-Sparford-Murray-Mack Kent, Washington rail trail. Like I said, they've been doing this for years. It's a local event, a successful event.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Passes, anything else?
Nothing for her.
Public Utilities?
Nothing tonight.
Rules?
Nothing to report.
Put of the order? Counsel Kinsey?
I have an invitation to the fellow councillors. My youngest son, he's a first grader at the Resonant School, talking to his teacher, Mrs. Doyle, talking about the need for children to move. Said he's sure every ten minutes, they need to get up and move, or they lose attention, and there's a lot of doggone effect that goes with that, lost attention, behavior. And as such, another hat I wear is in the helping moms industry, so I offered to go in and teach him some movement exercises that kind of, you know, don't, they keep you in a tight ratio of space. So I said to Mrs. Doyle, it'd be a nice opportunity to multitask, and I love to connect the city and the school whenever possible. As you witnessed here today, there's often conversations about city versus school, or this budget versus that budget. I love to eventually make the conversation, and that is one. And so my invitation, if you choose to accept the challenge, is to come in and partake in the movement exercise, as a means to connect schools, the kids, civic engagement, meeting their city councillors. No pressure. It's eight forty-five, Thursday morning.
Where?
Resonant School, Mrs. Doyle's class. Partake. I'll be there in spare. Uh-huh.
That makes two of us.
Anything else?
Is that ten minutes? Need the city council?
Plane contest.
Have discussion from the mayor, from Island Water and Sewer Update.
Thank you, President O'Brien. Thank you, members of the city council. And I apologize for some of you who've heard sort of this chronology of what's happened, but I thought it was very important for the newer councillors to get up to speed in terms of, you know, what's happened with the Plum Island Water and Sewer Project, and take you up as far as I can in terms of, before I request we go into executive session, to deal with immediate pending litigation. I'd like to introduce John Eric White, who is our city engineer, who has been with the team, working on this very complex and difficult process since the date of the first initial water break. As you know, this was a twenty-four or so million-dollar project that was completed in roughly 'oh-five, and was, again, like some capital projects that we've had in the city, have had multiple mayors overseeing this project. The way this project was designed, there was a feasibility study that was conducted. Some of the information that you heard in public comment was absolutely correct, but again, we can't go back. We have to go forward now and figure out what to do. There was a working group that consisted of members from Newbury Port and Newbury, who worked together, who oversaw this project. There were lots of issues with this. Number one, a lot of the residents in the community did not want it. Members of the city council weren't sure that they wanted water and sewer out to Plum Island. You know, ultimately, the litigation was settled, and the city council, not unanimously, but voted in support of the water and sewer project. There were a lot of moving parts to it. There had to be an overlay district, there had to be a memorandum of understanding. Overlay district restricted additional development out there, and then the project began to unfold. Camp Dresser McKee, now Camp Dresser McKee, C.D.M. Smith, was the lead on the contract, and there were two other contracts, one who completed Phase One, S.B. Construction, and D.C., did I get that right, Eric? Who did Phase Two Construction. Then the project reached substantial completion, was accepted, and we moved forward, and all of a sudden, it's April twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven, and I hear that there is a water main break out on Plum Island at the directional drill area, which is near Plum Island Grill, just before, as you come over the bridge down in that area. And I, of course, red flags were immediately raised because, you know, this is a brand-new system. How could we possibly have a water main break? Somebody mentioned maybe it had something to do with flushing hydrants, but anyway, needless to say, when John Eric White, Jamie Tucolo, and Dan Lynch walked into my office, and the looks on their faces, I knew something was wrong. They proceeded to explain to me what happened with the water main break, and they put two pieces of water main in front of me, one from a water main that they replaced a hundred years ago, and one from the directional drill area, and asked me to pick which one. I picked wrong. So obviously, that meant that the system was corroding very quickly, and we were very concerned about what we found. What was most concerned to me, you know, having a legal background, was where was the statute of repos or statute of limitations, and how can we protect our rights? That was absolutely critical, and we had a very short, we had to the following September of twelve, in order to retain our rights in terms of stopping the tolling of this statute of repos or limitations. Then we began to, I asked the gentlemen if they would please go out and do a couple other test pits. When they opened up the test pits, they began to discover that the materials that were used in these sites were corrosive. At that point, after we felt that we had sufficient information to go forward, I called Attorney Blodgett and went to meet with him and told him about my concerns. He assigned a lieutenant to work with us, who reviewed all of the documentation we had. We were very careful about videotaping pictures, dating, recording everything that we found as we uncovered the test pit, different test pits, and were identifying similar corrosive materials being used. After we had a chance to have the detective who was working with us review all of this information, they felt there was sufficient information for us to present a case to the inspector general, which in fact, we did. And again, each of these steps, as you move forward, take many, many months. Our work with the inspector general was about nine months, in terms of, at that point, we, you know, I came to the city council, we weren't quite sure where we were going with that, so some of it was discussed in executive session, some of it was discussed in, thank you, John Eric, and some of it was discussed in public forum. We just weren't sure what we were dealing with and where we were going at that point. So after working with the inspector general for about nine months, and they assigned an independent engineer to work with us, then we began to realize that we had probably fifty-eight thousand pieces of documentation that were in various places all over the city, some of it were missing, that we had to assemble this record. And this, you know, took a tremendous amount of time and energy on the part of our staff to put this whole record together. Part of the reason is that some of the records were being stored in an outbuilding at the wastewater treatment plant that were destroyed during the Mother's Day flood. So we had to go back and begin compiling this record. So we decided it was time for us to pull C.D.M. Smith in for our first meeting, and we met here, and our first meeting didn't go all that well, because initially, they were, you know, oh, well, there's corrosion, and there's corrosion, and then I said, okay, how about this corrosion? How about this corrosion? And we began to really push them in terms of what we were finding and what we had uncovered. And, you know, things started to change, and they began to, you know, sort of sit up and take notice that there was a serious problem that was happening and unfolding before the city here. We were fortunate that we were able to get them to agree, as well as S and B Construction and D and C Construction, to sign to stop the tolling of the statute of limitations, statute of repos. So that was a very important step forward in this process. After some difficult conversations with the city council, it was pretty clear to us that we needed better legal representation. So we went and hired Ruben and Rudman from Boston to work with us on a recommendation of our representative Costello, is an organ, a legal firm that has a lot of experience with this type of contract litigation. And I can tell you that I'm very, very pleased that we have engaged them in, to represent the city in this process. So continued our meetings with C.D.M. Smith, and to date, we've probably had eight meetings with them, between meetings and Cambridge meetings here. And it's a slow process. They present us with a fix. We're not happy with what they present. We consult with our attorney, and we've hired an expert engineer who was not easy to find because you look at the reputation of C.D.M. Smith and their international status, you don't just reach out to an engineer who's willing to take on a company of this magnitude. I have to say that they have been at the table, but it's been a slow process in terms of us moving forward. What we had to really get documentation of was what is it we were dealing with in terms of the materials in the system. So we went out and with C.D.M. Smith, and we were able to take borings, and were able to compile a bunch of samples and work through the lab. We identified a lab called Corrosion Probe in Newark, Delaware, who would do the testing. We wanted to ensure a chain of custody of all the materials that we took out of the system, and so we also hired a lab that is just doing a fabulous job, mass materials research out of Boylston. And so the lab, one of the lead lab technicians and scientists went with John Eric White to follow the materials as they went to the lab, were there for several days as they watched the testing that happened. That was completed this past June. I'm going to back up a little bit. During Hurricane Sandy, October twenty-ninth, at four-thirty in the morning, we experienced another water main break on the opposite side of where the directional drill was, where we, again, very similar kinds of situations, that we saw corrosion, deterioration of the bolts, and again, just, you know, grave concerns that sort of added to the picture. Once we completed the work with the inspector general, all this, all things were sort of happening simultaneously, we had a meeting with the attorney general at the State House and presented all of our findings to date, and they have accepted the case, and now we're working on two tiers, a criminal and a civil case. And I will discuss with you a little bit further about what's happening with, where we are with those cases in executive session after I finish the update, in terms of what I can... after I finish the update in terms of what I can present publicly. We are concerned at this point about over 18,000 bolts that are in the system. CDM Smith has given us their next round of fixes that they want to do very quickly. And that will include sleeving with polyethylene, the ductile iron that is on the two water mains that should have been done initially, and also introducing cathodic protection, which also should have been done at the time that these were installed. They're also going to try and change out any of the metals that they can and replace it with PVC. And so we questioned some of the use of this type of PVC with this interlocking mechanism because we wanted to be sure that there was some track record of use with this material in other parts of the country, particularly in a cold climate. So they just sent us their latest drawings, latest plans this past Friday that is being reviewed by our team. And that will include addressing the two issues at the two water main breaks. But we also pulled DEP into this, and we're very grateful that they sat at the table with us at our last meeting here just before Christmas with CDM Smith. And DEP has also been able to put a little muscle behind what we've been, you know, sort of pushing to get done. And in addition to fixing the two water main breaks, there's 147 hydrants that have to be repaired. Apparently, at some point during the construction process, someone decided to change out ductile iron connections to the hydrants with PVC, which you never would put PVC attached to fire hydrants because of the force of the water that comes out. We are not even doing flushing because we're concerned about the impact that would potentially have on the hydrants. We, there's problems with missing thruster blocks. There's problems with the bolts again. So DEP says, once you, at the same time you're fixing the two water mains and dealing with those issues, you will also fix 147 of the hydrants. So this is where we are in terms of what's happening with the water, what the current plans for fixing that are happening in the ground in terms of the water. But in addition to that, those of you who were on the council, when I was on the council, you recall that there were problems with the air vac, the sewer system that froze up. And the problem is, is that these cans that contain the system that connect to four homes shouldn't have been placed in the road. But because of the difficulty with plot lines and lands and everything else that's out on Plum Island, these were just put wherever they could put them. And so we have figured out a way to insulate these cans so that we have prevented them from freezing. Thank you, Jamie Tucolo and his work with air vac in terms of that piece. But we also have problems with some of the fiberglass rims that are starting to crack around these things. And there is problems in the Olga Way, which is the master mine, if you will, of the air vac system. Inside the system, there was, the HVAC system never worked. We had problems with the computer system overheating and trying to find ways to keep the system working and it bypassing. We also have problems with where they constructed an I-beam over four of the pumps, which at some point, these pumps have to be pulled out and replaced. And, you know, I am not in the construction industry, but I knew when I walked into Olga Way, and said, well, aren't I-beams supposed to go out to the loading docks so you can, you know, get these big, heavy pumps out onto the trucks to remove them? Same thing with the tank that is below ground level, which is where the sewer goes into and then is pumped out and sent to the wastewater treatment plant. So we have some issues with Olga Way in terms of HVAC, in terms of the, you know, I-beams where they are set up. And what am I missing, John Eric?
Just about all of them.
Okay.
Maybe there are more, but you can't...
But, you know, there are some other, you know, pieces that we're concerned about. But these are the major components, and it's enough, you know, in terms of, you know, where we are with this particular system. So I've taken you through sort of the chronology of what happened. But I would like to talk to you about where we are with an upcoming, very, very significant meeting in Boston, legal meeting, and about our preparatory meeting we had on Friday, which involves our detailed litigation strategy as we go forward. The most important message that I can give to the public and to you as city councilors is that we are not stopping until we get this system fixed. And it will not be on the backs of any of the residents out on Plum Island. So I respectfully request that we, it won't be a long executive session, I respectfully request that we go into executive session to discuss litigation strategy about where we are at this moment in time with this particular case.
Any motion? Will not be returning.
Point four.
The mayor mentioned originally, this is for immediate pending litigation. Which is it? Immediate litigation or pending litigation?
It's the same thing.
Same thing.
All right.
Going to executive session, Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Thank you. I would like to ask everyone who is not involved in this case to please retire from the room.
Go downstairs and make sure we're off.
Right all.
Make sure we're off TV.
Turn off your mics, everyone.